Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, regular township council meeting of September 24th, 2024. Introduction posting of notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the retire- with the requirements of the open public meetings law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on January 4th, 2024, which remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the New York Star-Ledger on January 8th, 2024. May I ask everyone to please stand for the flag salute?
...................................................
Roll call, Mr. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. McGrath?
Here.
Mr. Musella?
Here.
Mr. Neglia?
Here.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barberio, Township Attorney Mike Livery, Business Administrator Jamie Cryin, and Township Clerk Colette Madden. Council President, we have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you, yes, please.
Upcoming meetings, October 8th, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. is the agenda meeting. October 22nd, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. is the regular meeting. Moving along to ordinances, second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 2024-15, bond ordinance providing for the various sewer utility capital improvements in and by the Township Parsippany Troy Hills and the County of Morris, State of New Jersey, appropriating $5,726,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $5,726,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. The notice for ordinance 2024-15 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Parsippany Troy Hills, on August 27th, 2024, introduced at the August 20th, 2024 regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2024-15 be heard in its second and final reading?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. uh, Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Moving along to the public hearing, motion to open up the public hearing for ordinance 2024-15.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Floor is open to the public on this ordinance only.
Evening, Ken Dolsky, Parsippany. I am speaking tonight for Nick Homiak, our friend, who unfortunately had some oral surgery and is not able to attend. So imagine if he will that Nick can't talk. However, he asked me to pass along some thoughts that are related to this ordinance. No infrastructure improvements will have any effect as long as our streets, especially in commercial and business districts, are allowed to remain in substandard and unattended states of pollution and litter with no actual clean community mandates or cooperation from business store owners and residents in improving sanitation and source separation practices. Cleaning some of the areas like parts of North Beverworth Road one day a week with a machine is not the answer. Store owners must be encouraged, and if this is not sufficient, then mandated by law, to clean their premises, sidewalks, and gutters at least once a day. This is a minor task for the good of the community. The volume of plastics, especially along North Beverworth Road, are saying to everybody that nobody cares about this litter and garbage. If we allow all these products of convenience to exist and be used, then we must hold the sellers and consumers to some standard of citizenship. Storm drains along the length of the Rockaway River and in its river-sensitive areas need to be given special attention as many are outdated with wide-mouth entrances. The Hiawatha Pool area is in need of more frequent and caring attention and policing trash, including along River Drive and the end of Vale Road, which is another area of trash flight in need of more frequent attention. Lastly, the volume of trash and litter in these and many other areas makes a mockery of the slogan "Pride in Parsippany." There's clearly no pride when it comes to preventing or cleaning up litter. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, can I get a motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2024-15? Make the motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes. At this time, we're gonna take um, we're gonna, before we move on to the next ordinance, we'll allow the mayor to go ahead and make a proclamation.
Yes. Just so this fine gentleman doesn't have to sit through the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, I saw fifteen. Right, that would be coming up.
All right.
I'm gonna be reading a, you're gonna find out about this young gentleman in a moment how bright he is, how smart he is, and I wish I was as bright as you, considering you're number one person in the state. And I'm gonna read basically what this man, young man achieved. This proclamation by the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, whereas Evan Schwartz, age 15, is a lifelong Parsippany resident and alumni of Lake Hiawatha Elementary School and Central Middle School. Under the beginning sophomore year at the Academy for Business Administration at Morris County School of Technology, has at Randolph High School. And whereas, part of a very rigorous schedule, Evan attends classes at both Randolph High School and County College of Morris, where he finishes high school career with a high school diploma and associate's degree in business. And whereas, subsequent to taking required Microsoft certification courses and testing, Evan was notified by Pearson testing to Microsoft that he received a perfect score in Microsoft PowerPoint in addition to completing the test in the fastest time in the state. Whereas Evan Schwartz was named by both Pearson and Microsoft as the Microsoft Office Specialist New Jersey State Champion. Let's get a round of applause. Whereas Evan continued his to competition in the Microsoft Office Specialist MOS National Championship at Disney World Orlando from June 17th to the 19th, where he represented New Jersey in competition against the state champions from across the country, meeting with executives from both Microsoft and Pearson and attending leaderships and seminars. Whereas upon graduation from this program, Evan plans on continuing his collegiate experience as a business major at the Warren School of Business at the University of Pennsylvania. Now therefore, I, James R. Barberio, the mayor of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, hereby present this proclamation to Evan Schwartz as a token of respect and admiration, commend him on his outstanding academic accomplishments, and wish him well as he continues his academic, academic journey dated this 24th day of September. That's for you, Evan.
Well, you take your questions. So, first of all, I almost want to say, I'm sure you're a public speaker as well. Now, real quick, your dad called me up, he was all excited that we present this to you. Your dad's a lifelong resident of Parsippany as well. I don't know if you're a lifelong resident, but you can be for this amount of money. Also, I have a little token, a little gift to make myself to you, so you know, spend it wisely on your parents, because you know, I'm sure they, I wish you the very best in your, in your career. Young man, 15 years old, imagine, you'll be getting an associate's degree and everything all at one shot, so, you know, so maybe we'll be hiring you here. Thank you, township clerk.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Okay, so moving back to the ordinances, the second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 2024-16, bond ordinance providing for various improvements and upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant in and by the Township Parsippany Troy Hills and the County of Morris, State of New Jersey appropriating $9,500,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $9,500,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. The notice for ordinance 2024-16 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Parsippany Troy Hills, on August 27th, 2024, introduced at the August 20th, 2024 regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2024-16 be heard in its second and final reading?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes, public hearing. Motion to open up the public hearing for ordinance 2024-16. Make the motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
The floor is open to the public. Seeing no one, can I have a motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2024-16?
Make the motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2024-16.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2024-17, bond ordinance, cementing and supplementing bond ordinance number 2023-19, heretofore, finally adopted on September 5th, 2023 by the Township Parsippany Troy Hills and the County of Morris, State of New Jersey to increase the appropriation therein to $1,700,000 and to increase the authorization of bonds or notes therein to $1,700,000 to increase costs provided in NJSA 40A colon two dash 20. The notice for ordinance 2024-17 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Parsippany Troy Hills, on August 27th, 2024, introduced at the August 20th, 2024 regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2024-17 be heard in its second and final reading?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes, public hearing. Motion to open up the public hearing for ordinance 2024-17.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McGrath, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Floor is now open to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one, can I please have a motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2024-17?
Make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Musella?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes, whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2024-17.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, now we're moving on to the public session. I'd like to entertain a mo-, a motion to open up the public session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Floor is open to the public. You can speak on any matter, you have five minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Sandy Hall, I'm from Leighton, New Jersey. At your last meeting, I believe Mr. Carl Journey had made some comments to you about the resolutions sitting in Trenton right now that support the opposition to the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area change. After Mr. Journey had made his comments, another gentleman has stepped forward and made some other countercomments to that, and I would just like, for the record, to leave information with everyone, have copies for everybody on the town council about this particular issue. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to address the town council. I'm a founding member of the Delaware Water Gap Defense Fund. We actively oppose the Delaware River National Park and Lenape Preserve Alliance's proposal to change the designation of the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area to a national park and preserve. And I'm not here to debate the issue, I'm addressing designation comments made by a resident at your last town meeting. There are two important facts to know. First, requests to the Alliance for Impact statements have been ignored. Secondly, approximately 58,000 acres in this Lenape Preserve will be opened to forest-to-field conversion, and that could lead to possible timber degradation, habitat disruption, land clearing, urbanization, soil erosion, and resource extraction. We are not anti-government, as the other gentlemen said we were. We are working with the local legislators in Sussex and Warren Counties, Pike and Monroe in Pennsylvania to fight this designation proposal. The total clan of the Ramaco-Leney-Lenape oppose the proposal, as does the Lenape Nation of Pennsylvania. It is the Anadarko-Lenape from Oklahoma supporting the proposal. Hunting will not be allowed in the national park, only in the preserve. The national park designation does not guarantee more funding or staff. The National Park Service suffered a 12.5% budget cut last year. And to be clear, this proposal did not originate with the National Park Service. We have met with the National Park Service and offered cooperation for events and volunteer projects. Currently, there are two resolutions in Trenton opposing the proposal, AR 133 in the New Jersey Assembly and SR 93 in the Senate are waiting for a vote. We ask you to contact your local legislators, Dunn, Baranco, and Bucow, to support these resolutions that oppose the designation proposal. Pennsylvania Congressman Cartwright supports our efforts, New Jersey Congressman Kane supports our efforts, and Congressman Gottheimer recently added an amendment to Appropriations Bill HR 8998 opposing the designation change, and this bill just passed in the House, this passed Senate, this passed August, rather. I'm providing each council member with copies of the proposal, our objections and concerns, the resolution in the New Jersey Senate, and the list of opposing and supporting environmental organizations. We now have over 5,200 concerned citizens and groups in our opposition network. And I have extra copies for the gentleman who actually made those comments, and you can contact us anytime with your questions or concerns. And I'd just like to add that we did contact Congresswoman Shirell's office, and she kind of said this doesn't affect her folks, so she's not going to take any motion on it. But we have very strong support within the, our congressional area right now. If y'all have any questions or concerns, and again, these were just for, to make your record clear. That's it?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I leave this with you, sir?
Sure, absolutely.
Is your phone number on there?
Yes, sir, yes, all the information you need.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Passes down to the council.
Unfortunately, the topic of pilots popped up again at the last town council meeting. I disagree with several of the statements that were made at the meeting in favor of pilots. But because of time constraints, I'd like to respond to only one statement that was made by Councilmember Neglia, and that is that some pilots are necessary because projects won't get done without them. In the case of residential pilot, uh, projects, and I emphasize the word residential, pilots are never, never necessary. To begin with, residential pilots are huge money-losing propositions for municipalities because of the education costs associated with them. Let's suppose that a large residential project doesn't get built because a pilot is not granted. The township wins because it won't be losing money annually on the property for the next 30 years. And if the developer decides to build the project anyway without a pilot, the township is a winner again. Yes, we're still stuck with the affordable housing units and the cost to educate the students coming from the apartments, but instead of collecting $1 million in pilot payments, we'll be collecting $3 million in conventional taxes, and it's just an example. I have never heard a reasonable explanation of how a residential pilot is beneficial to a municipality. In my opinion, any member of the governing body who promotes or votes in favor of residential pilots is not acting in the best financial interests of Parsippany taxpayers. Thank you.
I would just like to quickly ask that, since I see there's a resolution to join the lawsuit against the state on the picture housing issue, that somehow we be given a copy of the brief, I assume it's now public?
Yes.
That's been filed, so we can see what the arguments are and what the legal strategy is. So how, how can we get copies of that?
Council President? Go ahead. Uh, Mr. Dolsky, I'll make sure that I get you a copy, I email you a copy, and then we'll also post it on the website as well.
Great, thank you.
First off, I have a little public apology to Mr. Cahill, as I blew through his article and made a misstatement on Facebook. I also corrected my statement. Previous town hall meeting, it was brought up that certain things are private. What you have in front of you is a DOT qualification list. It also turns around, is, most people don't understand, it's, if you haven't driven for 30 days, your employer has to pull all the information. And now, since the new CSA Act, which has been an act for about 15 years, it's all on record, electronically transferred. So if you turn around and get a notice from your security person, they're correct. It's all electronically transferred. Second thing is, which we can go over some other time, is if you have multiple employers, you require a manual log. And I'd like to thank Mayor Barberio for a program he's starting about public safety. Judy, I just got it to, because we thought we'd go bats over helmets.
Yes.
Thank you.
We got the bats.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Floor is closed. Moving on to the consent agenda, be resolved, all items with an asterisk are considered routine and uncontroversial by the township council, be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members' request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes, approval of minutes for the agenda meeting of 8/6/24 and regular meeting of 8/20/24. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez. No, uh, motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Uh, roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to presentations and reports, mayor?
Uh, thank you, um, Colette. Um, before I read my report, I'm going to be calling up, um, Mr. Ron Mandello to do a presentation on cannabis now. As you know, a lot of individuals in town, you know, were, I'm not saying pressure me to get this ordinance going, um, with regards to cannabis, that I did not feel comfortable with. Um, I didn't feel comfortable with it, the way it was written, the way even other towns have it. I felt that Parsippany is such a big town, um, you know, the bottom line is this, and I said this at the last meeting, and I'll say it again, um, there are residents that are concerned about dispensaries in Parsippany. So I felt it was my job to meet with a professional that handles this, where it can make me feel comfortable with any ordinance that we put up for dispensaries, or, you know, for cannabis in general, as all the classes that we have. And that gentleman was Ron Mandello. He came to my office, did a presentation for me, for Jamie, and for our zoning officer, not zoning officer, planner, and I felt very comfortable with regards to putting an ordinance forward. Um, and I want to thank you, Ron, for, you know, the presentation that you gave us, uh, but I did have some, you know, concerns, and, um, he addressed them. So, I mean, I'll be honest with you, not everything's going to be perfect, um, but, you know, the bottom line is that all the surrounding towns around us are going to have dispensaries eventually, and they're going to go drive through Parsippany, and we're not going to get any of the revenue. So, and I know a lot of the council members probably feel the same way I feel with regards to it. So, um, I present to you tonight, Ron Mandello.
Mayor, I appreciate the invitation. If we could just have a couple of minutes to set up the technical aspects, it wouldn't be too long. Ever fails, I usually bring my own equipment, so I know exactly what I'm doing.
How many attorneys does it take to set up a projector?
Six.
We should get, we should get Evan back in here.
Oh, okay. I think Microsoft is going to hire him. Computer's on.
Okay, so, so, when you, your only day before, as you make the reservation, you're saying something, you know, you're calling, you just added today.
They did, yeah. I just like, I'm fresh in the morning. Is it on?
Yeah.
That's nice.
Yeah.
I'll get it, I'll show you everything I got, I'll give you a little tour. Well, I think you're going to have to increase the budget for, uh, the next year.
I, I hope the hourglass hasn't been flipped over on us.
That is a safe possibility, if the wall has run down, though I've had mine for five years, and it's, it's running.
Don't they use this as zoning and planning?
Are they good? There it is.
There you go.
Just got something lights. He's pushing forward. There you go.
That's good.
With the mayor's and the governing bodies' permission, may I remove the microphone? I work better on my feet moving around a little bit. All right, so thanks again for the invitation, I appreciate it. I am Ron Mandello, and unlike many of the attorneys that may speak to you in this particular area, cannabis, I only represent municipalities. Most of the other attorneys that you have probably spoken to represent cannabis businesses, and they've got a vested interest in to make sure that Parsippany jumps into cannabis. Now, I don't live here, I don't govern here. I have no idea if cannabis is right for Parsippany. However, there are a few guiding posts. If you are a bedroom community, you are flush with cash, meaning you've got 20% of your surplus in the surplus budget, and you have no vacancies, it's absolutely, positively not right for your town. I'm going to make the assumption that all of those factors probably do not apply to Parsippany. Can you guys see this, or am I blocking anybody?
No.
All right, so I have done this presentation many, many times. There is about 80 slides, we are not going to get through all of them. I am stopping in about 10 minutes, so buckle up. But please stop me if you have any questions. All right, so this is cannabis businesses in New Jersey. All right, I am a member of the New Jersey Institute of Local Government Attorneys. I am the New Jersey State Bar Association Cannabis Law Special Committee Executive. I am the New Jersey State Bar Association Cannabis Municipal Land Use Co-Chair, and again, a trustee of this particular organization. That is my card. People always ask me if it's a scratch and sniff, it is not, so leave the card alone. These are some of the towns that I represent, and we need not spend a lot of time on this. As I mentioned, I was a councilman in two different towns, not at the same time. Borough Attorney in a particular town, Zoning and Planning Board Attorney, Zoning and Planning Board Chairman, so I am uniquely suited for this particular cannabis role with respect to municipalities. Don't ask me to do your application for the CRC, I have no idea how to go about doing that. Looks like I lost my point of, but anyway. My son says it's very important you know which bands that I like. So these are my two favorite, in this order, The Allman Brothers and The Grateful Dead. All right, so this is America's views on legalizing marijuana, and ironically, it's called marijuana, when you don't have a license, it's called cannabis, when you do, go figure. But in any event, I suspect that those numbers are going to greatly increase over time, where I would say that says 68%, I would say that that's probably on the low side. We're probably about 85% as we see now, that's 2020. All right, so we're speaking recreational cannabis. There is another form of cannabis, it is medicinal, alternative treatment centers. We're speaking recreational, these are the folks that are on the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, however, this particular fellow down at the bottom here, Mr. Barker, although he resigned, I'm told he gently got pushed out, and he has been replaced by the wife of the mayor of Plainfield. All right, so how did this get, how did this get passed? New Jersey has always been about home rule, and it will remain that way forever. Now, we know that New Jersey has 564 municipalities, California has 482. This got passed because all of the decisions remain up here with the governing body. If you want a particular cannabis business, if you don't want cannabis, you can opt out and remain opted out. If you want a particular cannabis business over some other business, all those decisions are made with the mayor and the governing body. So home rule continues, especially with cannabis. You have complete control over how it is authorized, how it is planned, how it is carried out. So who should be involved? Certainly, the governing body, the executive, meaning the mayor, they provide the 10,000-foot view, they've got to set policies on number of caps, distancing, community impacts, et cetera, and of course, you want, as we already have, your planner and any other construction code official that may be involved. So interested groups, local businesses, schools, universities, law enforcement, citizens, and of course, the law department. All right, let us, let us go through the various classes of licenses very quickly. So we've got a cultivator, obviously, those are the folks that are growing cannabis, that's what it looks like. We've got a manufacturer, they take the raw product, they turn it into gummies, tinctures, extracts, chocolates, et cetera, et cetera. There you go. They take the raw flour and put it in that machinery, which is extremely expensive. Cultivation, the odors can be very, very strong, they need really strict odor control mechanisms, to a much lesser extent, manufacturing, because it comes in those types of sealed bags and goes right into the equipment. All right, wholesaler, those gentlemen are ordering 100 of these, 500 of those, et cetera, et cetera. They probably own a cannabis dispensary. A distributor, well, that transports items in bulk from one cannabis establishment to another, that's what he's doing. All right, now, this is the most sexy class, Class 5, the cannabis dispensary. Everybody seems to be much interested in a dispensary versus some of the other, and that's what they look like. Many folks have asked me, and they've concerned about, what is this going to look like? I'm seeing most cannabis businesses are investing a half a million upwards in their businesses, assessments go up, property taxes go up, and they are beautiful stores. Let's talk about some Mythbusters. Now, everybody's concerned about this fellow at the top there, I'm going to get rid of that, I look like that guy. That's, that's got to go away. But everybody's concerned about this fellow hanging out on the street and a blight on the neighborhood, queuing at all hours, and looking like this bottom right-hand corner Weed World. I am not seeing that. And again, remember, I represent municipalities, I don't represent cannabis businesses, I don't have any skin in the game. This is what we're seeing, they are professional buildings, they really look up, very, very nice, tidy, organized, every single window is opaque. Nobody can peer in to see what's going on. Children can't get into these facilities. It is much easier for children to get into liquor stores, speaking from practical experience, I think when I was 18, I borrowed my brother Bobby's license once. You cannot get into these cannabis dispensaries, they are gauntlets. If you are under 21, you're not getting in. There are at least two checkpoints with very sophisticated machinery to try to figure out if your license is a fake. All right, this is, I guess you would call it an offshoot from Uber Eats weed delivery, is basically what it is. Folks that have this license can deliver to your house essentially 24/7. Let's hope it doesn't look anything like this vehicle. All right, this is one of the outliers. It's not a class of license, it's my favorite cannabis business, it is a cannabis testing lab. Now, it's not very popular, because there is no tax to the municipality with respect to a cannabis lab. However, our friends, professionals that we know, doctors, lawyers, accountants, I don't, despite what I look like, I don't smoke pot, I prefer scotch, but in any event, those folks are smoking cannabis, and it needs to be tested. We want to make sure there are no metals in the cannabis, we want to make sure there are no pesticides. All right, we're not going to get into the differences here. A microbusiness is just a scaled-down version of the other six licenses. All right, so what is the process at the state? Now, somebody could apply for what's known as a conditional license, they don't need any approval for, from Parsippany to go to the state, but within 120 days, they have to have the all-important resolution of support. If they do a state annual license, they first need the all-important resolution of support from the governing body in order to get that state license. We're not going to talk about the timeframe, this is a very important slide. It is a two-tiered process. That resolution of support is from the governing body, it's the most important piece of the puzzle. The CRC will not grant a state license without it. The local licensing occurs here, no need to reinvent the wheel, you already have licensing processes in place, simply use that. All right, so municipalities can create their own local licensing, what else we have? Here are the cannabis statutes in a nutshell. A municipal, a municipality cannot enact ordinance, is not in conflict with the Cannabis Cremo Act, you can govern the number of cannabis establishments, but not the delivery to your town. What does that mean? So if Parsippany decides to opt out, and if there are surrounding towns that have opted in and have either a Class 6 delivery, or a Class 5 that also delivers, they can deliver to your residents 24/7, you can't say anything about it, and you don't get any of the revenue. The state has preempted this field. I had a mayor in a town which I will not mention, he said, "I don't like marijuana, I will never allow it in my town, I'm going to put police officers around the perimeter of my town and make sure nobody comes through selling it." He said, "Mayor, you're going to lose the next election, and you're probably going to get indicted." That would be against the law. It is preempted. You cannot stop folks from delivering 24/7. You can govern the location, the times of operation, most importantly, establish civil penalties for violations. If for some reason, they are not using the technology they're supposed to, and folks that are under 21 get served, shut them down and fine them. And municipalities can impose a separate local licensing, we spoke about that. Now, most of the towns opted out years ago, because the New Jersey Institute of Local Government Attorneys, of which I am a trustee, they were concerned about the regulation. We don't know what the regulations are going to be, so you have that pro forma opting-out resolution or ordinance that you got from the League of Municipalities, so did everybody else use it. However, there was no epiphany, the regulations are just more details on the statutes, there's nothing else there. Everything we mentioned in the statutes before is up there in the regulations. So you want to make sure that if you are permitting it, make it feasible. You don't want to say, "Well, we want it 5,000 feet away from every school." You have essentially opted out and made cannabis in utility, you just, there's no way it would be permitted. Make it a permitted use or conditional use, figure out where you want to put it, the number of licenses. I hate this slide, but I can't tell you how many governing bodies insist that I do this, so there are a dozen factors that go into these numbers. How many cannabis establishments are in your town and the surrounding town? So this is shooting from the hip, but retail typically could make 9 million to 12 million a year, so that would be 180 to 240,000 dollars to the municipality. Cultivation, about 12 million to 15 million for about 15,000 square feet. Understand that it takes 16 to about 25 months for them to ramp up. You put the seeds in the ground, it takes a while, but you could see revenues of a quarter million to 300. Manufacturing, highly profitable, if you've got the capital to buy that equipment, 20 million to 25 a year, 400 to about a half a million a year. All right, some other potentials, local employment, most of my municipalities require that a cannabis business try to hire Parsippany residents, 80%, 50%, and explain why you can't, if you can't. You will see a positive community impact, cannabis businesses are required to show that positive community impact through education, donations, expungement clinics, volunteerism. Local businesses, there usually is a typical increase in sales for local businesses, everybody jokes, yeah, the pizzeria isn't fast food because of munchies, right. Commercial vacancies, if they are, if they are here now, there will be a significant decrease in commercial vacancies. All right, we're not, that's the process I put together for Hoboken, we're not touching that, that's Jersey City. Interesting, Jersey City was inundated, and Hoboken inundated with telephone calls, I suspect you will too. And they put together this interactive map where you could just punch in an address, and it would tell you whether or not it was in the green zone. So you may want to set up a webpage, no more applicant scoring, there's some case law that says it is Big Smoke versus West Milford. As long as your decisions are reasonable, the judge is not going to touch it, not going to overturn it, so don't get into scorecards and all that other stuff. Understand that cannabis applications are not operable, we shouldn't be sending somebody else's business plan to another competitor. All right, we're not going through any of that. Limitations, grocery stores, delis, can't have it, indoor food, can't have it, anything that engages in food, you cannot have a cannabis business. All right, local support, resolution by the governing body, it has to include a determination that the town has authorized this class of license sought by the applicant, and if there's a numerical limit, let's say three, it shouldn't be resolution number six. Proof of local support, this comes from your zoning officer, I get three calls a week from zoning officers, "I'm not doing this, I'm waiting for the planning board to give me a thumbs up." No, it's a simple letter, you can charge for it, it basically says, "This particular class of license is permitted in this particular green zone." End of story, it's less than a paragraph. So this is how a municipality handles a cannabis application, we want to look at odor, we want to look at location, signage, neighborhood impact, security's big, prohibiting sales to minors, no consumption on the premises, traffic, municipal incurred costs of enforcement. That's a big one for me. Want to make sure that none of this falls on the taxpayer's shoulders, and there's ways to do that. There are reasonable host community agreements, where if the CFO has to audit, that gets passed to the cannabis business. Opening day, you may need seven police officers, that gets passed to the cannabis business. We don't want the taxpayer on the hook for this. Now, the cannabis business may say, "Why not? Other businesses don't have to pay this stuff." What other business in New Jersey pays a vig, a municipal tax to a municipality? None. This is not a typical business, it's extremely and highly regulated. Those are the percentages, by the way, you'll see that there is nothing for cannabis labs, cannabis testing, very innocuous, nobody's allowed in, and there's only a couple of folks with white lab coats, very innocuous. All right, we already saw that, we saw that. You may or may not want some type of a cannabis subcommittee, a cannabis review board, those are policy decisions that you folks will make, and if you are going to have it, does the governing body have the knowledge and the bandwidth? Jersey City needed a cannabis control board, why? Because there are up to 100 applications, and the governing body and the mayor would simply collapse if they had to review all of those applications. I know Parsippany is going to have a lot of interest, but probably not 100 applications. Record-keeping for those boards, there should be some level of record-keeping. All right, this is host community agreements, I'm simply going to say that our appellate division said it's okay, you're allowed to do it, just make it reasonable. It should not be, "Give us this amount of money, and we will, or buy us four fire trucks, and we'll give you your resolution of support." It should include the applicant to sponsor job hiring fairs, attract local residents, women, people of color, reentry candidates, engage in community outreach, maybe contributions to charities, first responders, et cetera, et cetera, it's not a money grab, we're not going to go over that. Require some level of site control, you don't want applications coming in for the same site. We don't want six applications saying, "Oh, I've got that site." Get a lease, a deed, a binding letter of intent, you want to make sure the ordinance has host community agreement language in there, but it should only be negotiated after the cannabis business has all the approval, so no judge could say, "Come on, that was under duress, and you hung that resolution of support over their head in order to get that resolution of support." The cannabis board or subcommittee and the planning board, they're going to vet that cannabis application, but again, the final authority is with the governing body. There should be some appeal process for the disgruntled or aggrieved applicants that didn't get it, letters of support have no place in this process. The medicinal ones, a, simply a letter from the mayor sufficed, but we don't have any ATCs anymore, the last were 2019. Your licensing process should be annual, so you could keep tabs on the cannabis business. All right, we know this, don't solicit anything of value. Worst statute I've ever seen, they copied the casino statute and basically said that any member of the governing body, the judge, any planning board member, et cetera, et cetera, can't have an interest in a cannabis business anywhere in the state. Notice they excluded attorneys, senators, assemblymen, but those folks up there can't. That is it, I'm sorry, we don't, need not go into litigation, that's more time than I expected to spend on this, and I apologize. Any questions?
Can you, can you own, and I think we, I think we touched on this, I don't quite remember, because it was pretty detailed when we spoke.
It's a lot of stuff.
Can you own a dispensary, a manufacturer, and cultivating company, or just one?
Ideally, those are the kinds of, in my opinion, cannabis businesses that you really want, it's a vertical business. And if there's a big building, and they want to do manufacturing and cultivation there, you've got control, that's one site, and you know exactly what's going on at that particular site. You don't, you can, but you don't usually see cultivation, manufacturing, and a dispensary at the same site, it is an anomaly, but I have seen it.
But it's separate licenses.
Those are separate licenses, separate fees, yes, absolutely, separate resolutions of support, yeah. Anything else? All right, well, I thank you very much, and apologize once again for going over my time.
Ron, I first, I just wanted to tell the township council, I appreciate it. We're going to have more meetings with Ron to go over policy, because that's next, with regards to how many dispensaries, how many manufacturers, cultivators, if any, in Parsippany. So Ron, thank you once again.
Thank you. Thank you for the introduction, appreciate it.
Okay, I'm just, a few things to announce here, Council President. I'm going to read into the record two things here tonight. One is, I spoke to Michael Collins. One is I spoke to Michael Collins, the attorney for the affordable housing litigation that towns are opting into. And tonight there'll be a resolution on for the township of Parsippany to opt into it. I had a really good conversation with him. Because, you know, Parsippany will get impacted probably the most when it comes to the amount of affordable housing. But I want to read into the record. There's this notion that only municipalities against the recent Affordable Housing bill -- excuse me, I have allergies -- are affluent suburban towns or ultra wealthy communities trying to keep the poor out. That is not Parsippany. We have diversity and we have economic diversity here in Parsippany. I myself, I grew up in Corona Heights Apartments. I'm a product of moderate income housing growing up here. My mother and father did not make much money, but that being said, it was the best and I cherished my time there and this is where my love for this great town grew. We are not trying to keep poor people out of our town, but rather ensure fairness across all municipalities and across the new developments are addressed. Most importantly, and new requirements should prioritize keeping our hardworking, longtime residents who can no longer afford to live in New Jersey. We are very much in favor of adding affordable housing and it needs to be done in a sensible way. There are ways to produce affordable housing that do not have to create the problems that it's going to create. The current law poses excessive mandates on municipalities without fully considering local conditions and resources or ways to help address the costs associated with development. As it stands, our taxpayers have to cover all the costs for the entire building of additional infrastructure, impacts to schools, to police, and public safety. No one disputes there is a value and need for affordable housing. There's no doubt a housing affordability crisis is in New Jersey. The dispute is how to go about addressing affordable housing and this law is not the way to go about it. It needs to be more thoughtful and include those at local level. They are not addressing the cost and who's paying for it. It's critical that our voice as township is heard. I hope that joining this litigation allows the state to take a deep breath and step out and provide the opportunities to get all the important stakeholders at the table, including local municipal leaders, to craft regulations that will be effective and efficient at meeting our state's affordable housing needs. It should start with creating an avenue to keep Parsippany residents in Parsippany and not forcing them to move out of the state because they cannot afford New Jersey after retirement. It should continue with ensuring that affordable housing obligations are shared fairly and proportionally between all New Jersey municipalities, not exempting over 60 municipalities from the mandate. It should end with ensuring that there is a clear consideration addressing the infrastructure, public safety costs, and school impacts that will be created. I believe in diversity. I believe in economic diversity. I believe that the current law is terrible, and I mean it, terrible for Parsippany, terrible for municipalities, and terrible for New Jersey. So I'm going to move on to my next. Well, first I'll get into the summer concert. Our last summer concert will be this Thursday and the group has made it off a rock. Now, last week, myself and the Board of Education President took it upon ourselves to meet, to talk about, and there will be a press release that will be put out with regards to our meeting that we had on Thursday. And I'm going to read some of it. And I mean this wholeheartedly. We had a really great conversation, Andy Trappo and I, with regards to meeting and discussing pilots and just other things, not just pilots, shared services. Today is a historic day for Parsippany. As committee leaders, Andy and I recognize that we must work together for the betterment of our community at large and not permit those with their own agendas to divide us or cause us to lose focus on our current mission, to make Parsippany the best. As a product of our school system, I know firsthand how important our schools are to thousands of families in town. While the Board of Ed and the municipal government are separate bodies, we must work together as one for Parsippany. As I stated all along, pilots are not a fantasy, but they are useful too, which can and should be used to effectuate code development projects where needed or that provide a significant community benefit. I've always stated that I will work with the Board of Education to determine a fair and equitable way to use a portion of pilot funds for the direct benefit of our schools but also of our township. The Board of Education President stated, "I am delighted to announce this working partnership with Mayor Barberio and appreciate his recognition that it is a fair and appropriate to use portions of pilot funds to receive for the direct benefits of our schools." Now, what I'm going to read now goes to the affordable housing. We have significant financial needs in our schools. We have costs that are increasing far greater than the 2% cap will permit us to address. We must plan for increased demands for space, teachers, and staff that will be caused by the state of New Jersey's Affordable Housing Program. We cannot overstate the impact that the state mandated in affordable housing will have on our schools in the coming years. The mayor and I agree that although we are separate areas of government, we must work together as one for the benefit of Parsippany. And he states, "I look forward to scheduling these meetings and getting to work." And the reason why those statements were made, we had a really in-depth conversation with regards to pilots, to affordable housing. Everybody keeps saying that pilots grade school age children. They don't. They don't at all. What creates school age children is the mandated affordable housing. And I think once we get past that pilots grade school age children, when they don't -- and Andy and I did that. The conversation was great. I'm looking forward to working with Andy. We're going to change the perimeters and how we're going to meet and discuss. And I'm going to speak to those individuals. Council Vice President Frank Naglia and Matt McGrath are on the committee. There'll be dialogue between the superintendent of schools and the business administrator, Andy and myself. And then I'm going to be reaching out to our committee that we formed, and they have an ad hoc committee as well. And I'm glad that Andy and I could put things aside because that's what you're supposed to do as leaders. You're supposed to put things aside, not make it political, to move forward and move forward what's best, not just for Parsippany, but for our children, for our seniors. There's a lot of things here that take effect. And I can tell you right now, growing up in this town, living in this town, I know very well, but I also know we have a very, very, very large senior community here in Parsippany. Large. And we need to get the best bang for our buck. After speaking with Michael Collins on affordable housing, I felt very comfortable. I don't know which way this lawsuit is going to go, but I'm encouraging other townships throughout the state to get involved. Because the more numbers that we have, the more pressure is on the state, the more pressure that's on fair share of housing. It's kind of funny, and I don't mean this anything towards fair share of housing, but it's kind of funny how they are just pretty much that powerful that they control. They can control so much of municipalities that our government body, our administration really doesn't have a say. And that's why I believe that this lawsuit is something that needs to be done, to let them know, we need to be heard. We need to have a voice. You just can't come here and say, "You have to build all this," and then tell us, "Okay," like they did with -- excuse me one minute -- with Landadex. Well, you're going to have to build two new wells. Well, each well costs $6 million. Who pays for that? Taxpayers. Okay, well, you have to redo your infrastructure, which means what? Your roadways. We get no mandate, it's mandated, we have no funding from the state, but yet there are 60 municipalities that are exempt. And what's kind of strange on that, these are the areas that need affordable housing. Okay, they need it significantly. So we should all share in the burden together. Not that it's a burden, of course. We want people to have affordable housing. I can tell you, I'm an affordable housing administrator. You've heard it how many times? I got to see how many people can't afford to live in New Jersey, they have to have this type of housing. I get all that. But our infrastructure, our police department, our schools are going to be affected drastically because, as you see, we have companies that are going to be vacating in the future. Next year, we're going to have a big one that's going to be vacating. So, and I'm going to bring this up tonight for one reason and one reason only. And I know there's been some meetings in your area, Paul, with regards to housing, with regards to -- we're in a catch 22. So if we have housing come in and we try to avoid it by putting warehousing in, we get yelled at for the warehousing. But we're trying to stop the pain. Now, the warehousing is positively ratable. It's no school age children that are going to the schools. So we're in a catch 22. We have to make a decision. I have no problem making that decision. I'm sure the government body has no problem. But that's what you're left with. You're not left with these companies coming here and knocking your door down because they're not anymore. And facts, I mean, you're going to be leaving. And, you know, when you hear and you read the sky, you know, one of the letters to the editor, which is fine by me, I don't really care, when they were saying, "Mayor Barberio, the sky's not falling down." Well, no, it's not falling down, it's collapsing. And I can tell you this much right now, I've spoken to many, many, many of our corporate -- they're going to believe in Parsippany. So when someone wants to write a letter to the editor, that's fine, you know, you can do it and there's rebuttals, I get all that. And they compare us with other towns. You can't compare Parsippany to other towns. You just can't. You can't say that, you know, and they are, a lot of companies from suburban areas are going to urban areas now. It used to be the other way around. You can't compare Parsippany. You can't compare Hoboken to Parsippany. You can't compare any of these towns to Parsippany. Why is that? Well, we're the third largest corporate center in the state of New Jersey and we're the number one corporate suburban area in the state of New Jersey, which means what? We have the most to lose. We have a lot to lose. So when we lose these ratables, when we lose these companies that are going to most likely be leaving, and then we're being told by the professionals that the market's not coming back to possibly 2040, you never even know that. 2040, we have to address these issues. And I think, I hope this lawsuit does that. I hope the state comes to its senses with regards to towns like Parsippany and all the surrounding towns. We're not an affluent community because we have 7,000 apartments. And I consider them not low income but moderate income in the sense that, but we don't get to count those numbers. So that's why Parsippany is going to have big numbers going forward and hopefully that this lawsuit addresses that. And everything else has been done. Cannabis and Council President, thank you for letting me have your time.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up, Mayor. Thank you for, you know, kind of giving us an overview and I'm glad that we've taken the first steps in trying to proactively work on a new revenue source together, which is cannabis and seeing how that can benefit the municipality and be a new source of revenue for this township. I just want to ask you a question about the press release. I'm really glad to hear that we've met with the Board of Education in trying to allay their concerns about the impacts of pilots on the school district, but what are the specific details of this agreement that is going to be worked on? Can you comment on that?
Well, yeah, first, there is no agreement. First, we're going to sit together, talk, give the facts out, the logistics of what a pilot, some parts that we have, and logistic of -- and we did meet with regards to shared services, with regards to projects that the schools, a capital project that the schools need to get done. And of course, we're going to have to address some of the needs that we have here in Parsippany. That's going to be the starting point for Andy and I to discuss in detail. I have a list of what they need done, which is, and I kind of, in all reality, it's a lot of stuff and I don't know if the township can handle it all, but we're going to get to the table. We're going to see which pilot prioritize and see where we can go from there. And that's where Andy and I are going to meet on a regular basis. And I'm not going to sit here and tell you everything because it might not happen, but you will know, we can have executive sessions because now going forward, there are going to be negotiations. And negotiations, you know, until you have an agreement, you really don't, you know, discuss the negotiations out in public.
So just so I understand, this press release is just announcing that--
We're going to work together.
Okay.
Pretty much what I read into the record is what's going to be in the press release. You ready, Frank?
Okay.
Any township council?
Yeah, I had a meeting with the library's liaison and I just want to announce that it was decided that regarding the Lake Hiawatha Library, they're not going to give up the construction bond and will go ahead with plans for renovations using the approximate $3 million the town committed in matching funds. And the library will apply for a substantial change and see if the state is willing to give the bond money or possibly a reduced amount so they can move forward with some type of renovation. They said they need to check with the bond council to see if the bonded funds can be used for renovations and that's being looked into. Also, they discussed the roof was also discussed and agreed upon to do. And they, I believe they've gotten four quotes and they just recently, they said, sent it to the purchasing director, Susan Taylor, I think her name is?
Yes.
And she just received those, so I guess the town will look over those and then, I guess, talk to the library, make recommendations, and get that done. That's pretty much all they really discussed regarding.
Just a follow-up. So the project, I recall, was supposed to be $6 million, so they're now going down to $3 million?
Well, actually, no, the project was originally, you're right, $6 million, but then with all the increase--
And it went up to $9 million.
It went up to $9 million, so now what they're looking to do is utilize the funding that was bonded from the town, which is probably around $2.8 million left, and they're going to utilize what they can out of that, along with any funding they can get to the state to renovate the Lake Hiawatha Library.
Did they forego the $3 million grant?
No, they're trying to get it into the renovation, thinking that if they redo it along with, you know, some new architectural drawings to renovate, they're hoping they can get a good portion of it.
Okay.
That's what their hope is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's their timeframe?
They're not going to lose the bonded amount because they reapplied for an extension. So they didn't really say, they said they can reapply for the extension every year, so I guess they really don't have a timeframe, but they would like to get it done as soon as possible.
So basically, what's going to happen going forward with regards to the time, there will be a timeframe that they're going to get from the state as well, even though they get an extension. So it's going to come down to the governing body and the library and the administration deciding on the funds. Right now, like, we do have a certain amount of money left in our bond, $2.8 million, like Council Vice President said, but they have to actually get it to exact because, I mean, I don't know how much more money the township would be able to put out. That's really what's at.
The reason why I ask about the timeframe is because sometimes the congressional office does offer grant money and they had mentioned the library might be a program that the next time this comes around, that if we apply for that project for grant money from the congressional congressman Scherr's office, that it might be a possibility.
I believe we applied for that already.
Yeah? Okay.
Any other member from the township council?
Yes, I just want to make some comments around Economic Development Team. So alongside Mayor Barberio, we welcome new businesses, Dunkin' Donuts on September 7th at 1980 Route 10 West, Premium Digital Office Solution on Tuesday, September 17th at 141 New Road, and Premier Classic Cars on Saturday, September 21st at 3460 Route 46. Economic Development Team collaborated with the New Jersey Economic Development Authority to offer several grants tailored for local businesses. These grants aim to assist businesses in offsetting leasing expenses for newer extra space, ranging from $250, or sorry, $250 to 10,000 square feet at street level. There's a provision for $5,000 to $50,000 to reverse business proprietors for expenses linked to interior, exterior enhancements, and the acquisition of installation of new furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And this is a program we talked quite a bit about, working with Frank Cahill. There's been over 20 Parsippany businesses have applied for these grants and upon approval, they're expecting over $1.3 million in grant funding. They've been very proactive and informed numerous real estate agents as well, so people that are looking to fill their local businesses, that these grants are available to people and make sure that they're understanding of how to go and apply for them. And it's a valuable incentive for potential tenants to consider Parsippany as their new landing home. So for further details, please contact Frank Cahill at 973-559-6000. And just a reminder that October 1st at 6:30 is the next-- that October 1st at 6:30 is the next Economic Development Meeting. So if you're interested in coming and attending, please reach out to Frank and RSVP. And also, the Transparency Committee is scheduled to meet on October 15th at 6 o'clock here at Town Hall. So after a bit of a summer off, that is back on the agenda as well. Thank you.
Any other member from council?
Council President, can I just make one more comment? It has to do with development in town. On Sunday, I met with about over 100 residents and one of the discussions we had was, and they said to me about overdevelopment. And I said, and I said to them, and, you know, it's not overdevelopment. There's no overdevelopment here in Parsippany. It's redevelopment. Because everywhere that's being built is being redeveloped. It's already built out. You've got Landadex, which was built out. You've had 2030, Landadex across the street was an office building. These are all redevelopment projects. So far, there's been no new, and anybody that's coming here is the same thing. They're taking properties in Parsippany that are developed. And then, of course, there's a process on redevelopment. That's what they're doing. So there's no new groundbreakings or anything like that. They demolished the buildings, but that's because it was developed already and it was a different need. And I explained that to the residents and they, they really, they got it. They understood that, hey, it's not overdevelopment, it's redevelopment. Overdevelopment would be if you have vacant land and you start building on it. That's not what we have here in Parsippany. So, and that's why, when I talked about affordable housing, that's why our numbers might be big, because we're eyeing, and these fair share of housing individuals are going to see what can we redevelop and where can we redevelop it. And that's, that's where our numbers are going to come in on all redevelopment in Parsippany. So thank you.
Township attorney?
No report this evening, Council President.
This administrator?
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Just real quickly, Morris County recently announced the development of a countywide local safety action plan. It's to identify and prioritize transportation safety improvements to reduce fatal and serious injury crashes on our county and municipal roadways. Parsippany residents are urged to visit morris.safetypansnj.com. That's morris.safetypansnj.com to participate in a survey and web mapping activity. Parsippany and the county have mutual goals of reducing traffic fatalities and serious injuries, and this is one avenue to do so. Will be eligible for additional grant funding if, you know, the more people that apply, the more people that fill out the survey, the more opportunity we have to get grant funding. So please take part. The county has been a great partner to us in this and they're looking to do what they can to help. I just want to thank the residents, I think there's about 7,000 of them, that came out to the Fall Festival. It was a great day. Also want to thank the employees who worked hard and did their best to prepare for what turned out to be a really beautiful day. Trunk or Treat is on October 26th from 1 to 4 p.m. at Smithfield. So save the date on that. There'll be more information on the website. Also want to congratulate Frank Cahill, being elected governor. Congrats.
And you'll honor taxes. Definitely.
It's, you know, 33 years dedicated service of the Quanis is pretty amazing. And it's great community service on your part. So thank you for that. The state of New Jersey Low Income Household Water Assistance Program, can help you pay if you're in arrears on your water or sewer bills. Program may be able to help address tax leads to the water and sewer arrears as well. So to get more information, go to waterassistance nj.gov or call NJ211. And last but not least, the former's market continues on Friday. So that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Cryon, you mentioned Smithfield for Trunk or Treat?
Yes.
Okay.
I have no report. Moving along to ordinance's press reading, there are none. Moving along to the non-consent agenda, R2024-154, providing for the issuance of special emergency notes in the amount not to exceed $1,202,593.74 to fund contractually required severance liabilities resulting from the retirement or termination of employees in the township. Motion to approve resolution?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Mr. Naglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
Motion passes R2024-155, authorizing township officials to undertake certain actions in connection with the issuance and sale of A, $66,765,000 Bond Anticipation Notes, Series 2024, tax exempt, consisting of $25,569,000 General Improvement Notes, $26,240,000 Water Utility Notes, $13,956,000 Sewer Utility Notes, and $1 million Golf and recreational Utility Notes, and B, $2,422,000 Special Emergency Notes, Series 2024, federally taxable. Motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Naglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
And Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
Motion passes R2024-156, authorizing the removal of dead and diseased trees to Tree King Incorporated. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
Motion passes R2024-157, authorizing change order number five for the Craftsman Farms Log House Kitchen Restoration Annex Project awarded to Pravco Incorporated. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Naglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
Motion passes R2024-158, authorizing change order number two for the Mount Tabor Phase One Water Main Replacement Project ordered to Regal Utilities Service Incorporated. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Naglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
Motion passes R2024-159, authorizing change order number one for the meter replacement program, Phase One awarded to National Metering Services Incorporated. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Naglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
Motion passes R2024-160, authorizing a contract for the purchase of one Toro Multi-Pro 5800 Turf Sprayer with Accelerate and Accessories. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Naglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
Motion passes R2024-161, authorizing the purchase of two 2025 Ford Explorers Active Four Wheel Drive Vehicles with options from Nielsen Ford of Morristown. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Naglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
R2024-162, authorizing the settlement of litigation with Revax Contracting Corporation. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Naglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
Motion passes R2024-163, authorizing the execution of an agreement with William A. Gruckman, D.O., for Medical Director Services. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Naglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
Motion passes R2024-164, authorizing the participation in litigation to address the constitutionality and/or validity of New Jersey's affordable housing mandates. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Naglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
Motion passes, moving along to approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Leonard Ho recommends authorization for payment. Number one, authorizes payment of September 27th, 2024, regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at $1,650,000. And number two, payment for bills from bachelor list of September 15th, 2024 through 9/17, 2024, $2,67,387.3. Can I have a motion to approve the authorization for payment above, please?
Make the motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Naglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Can I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Naglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karipi?
Yes.